Hold on, Bill, we're just waiting to get on the LTC.
Okay.
Don't let me know. Okay, we're all set, we're on now, Bill.
Okay, well, welcome everybody to the subcommittee dealing with the job description for the hiring of a new city auditor. With that, we also have Councilor Drinkwater on board, thank you. We have Mary Calery here, Director of Human Relations. Mary, we have a job description. We also have what's required, the qualifications. You sent us also information on the type of ads that were sent out. You also sent us salary comparisons to other communities, so with that effort, I want to thank you. But could you briefly give a description of what the job qualifications are? I think everybody's got a copy, but can you just review them, what's expected?
Sure, so should have a bachelor's degree in accounting, municipal accounting auditing experience, and a minimum of five years' experience required. Certified government accounting, certified public accounting, preferred but not required. A master's degree in accounting management experience preferred. Their supervisory responsibilities, they directly supervise about seven employees in that office. They're responsible in accordance with the policies and applicable laws according to accounting. Interviewing and training employees, planning and assigning and directing work. Disciplining employees, addressing complaints and resolving problems. And to assist the council in selection of outside audits. Assist in preparation for yearly recap with Department of the DOR. Fulfill other duties as set by the statute or the city ordinance. Attend and participate in staff, department, city council, and/or other meetings, conferences, or committees.
Okay, I wasn't sure, did you touch upon the CPA, whether they needed a CPA or not?
Yes, so in the job description, it's preferred but not required.
Okay, that was brought up by Councilor Elliott regarding that. To the members of the subcommittee, any questions regarding the job description?
Yeah.
Councilor Conway?
The, can we talk about the money now, or?
Why don't we just talk about the qualifications, what the requirements at this point? There's been a question of whether someone should be a certified public accountant. Or we've had in all our previous requirements that we've sent out, the job qualifications that the CPA be preferred, not required. Does anybody have any concerns with any of the qualification requirements? With that, so basically we'll accept and give to the task committee that we accept the present qualifications as they stand? Okay. Next, if we could talk about the ads. Mary, could you talk about how, there was a concern the last time, you know, on the time before, you know, do we get enough information out, what sources do we use? Are we current with how we approach the matter of sending out information to get the best qualified candidate? Can you review what we do, what our ads look like?
So I think everybody does have a copy. Last time, and we, it was advertised for quite a while. We advertised for two weeks, then again another three weeks, and then again another two weeks, which we started in July and the job closed in October. The present auditor was hired in December. So the places that we advertise in is the city's website, social media, which consists of Twitter and LinkedIn, Mass Hire, I gave you a copy of the advertisement for Mass Hire. We send it to all the nonprofits, MMA, mass municipal auditors and accountants, mass government of finance offices and associates, Indeed. Last time, we did not do Boston Globe, it was close to $3,000. If you do Boston Globe, excuse me, they'll advertise on Monster and Glassdoor. Now, Boston Globe, and we can do the ads to try to be more prominent, you know, make them a little bit bigger, but of course, you know, that's going to cost us some money. But we will be able to do that.
Just for the record, I suggested to Mary if we could do that with the present ads. You know, it's very easy to go buy them very quickly, but the thing is, I think the more prominent we're able to set them up, the better off we are. But I think there's a question now of whether we would do the Boston Globe. With the members of the subcommittee, any questions or direction in that regard? Councilor Conway, Mr. Noon?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, in regards to that, how effective the newspaper is. I mean, I'm not directly in tune to that. I think Mary Calery might have a better handle on whether, you know, when we got inquiries and the last time we had this job open, were the questions asked to them, where did you see, or how did you hear about this job? Through you, Mr. Chairman, Mary Calery?
Right, so most of the applicants we got in was from Indeed.
Okay, but we didn't have an ad in the Boston Globe in the last group, right?
Correct, we did the group before.
Through your, your knowledge and understanding, Mary, is the Globe, and, you know, needless to say, back a few years ago, newspapers were extremely effective in advertising. Is it still, do they still have a piece of that pie of advertising that people will gravitate to? I mean, I'm looking at the Globe, for example, the Globe online. You know, is that, are you talking about online, the hard copy or online?
Well, the Boston Globe would be 30 days online, and they also do three printed ads.
Okay, alright. I don't know, how much are we talking on that, Mary?
It was close to $3,000, about $2,900. 30 days online, the three printed ads, 30 days on Monster, and 30 days on the Glassdoor.
Yeah, I mean, I think that because we had such a difficulty in attracting individuals, and we didn't use that last time, maybe, maybe we reach out and do it this time. I know it's a lot of money, but it might not be a bad idea. I could go either way on it.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think a number of the postings that you have shown us, particularly the municipal associations and municipal auditors and accountant association, as well as the government finance office association, those are the people that are really in the line of auditing, and you're right, maybe add other people like Boston Globe and others, and to see maybe we can cast in the big net and trying to reach out more people. In addition, I think, you know, if you're not already done it, I would suggest that go back to some of those applicants that apply for the position in the past, and to see, you know, maybe they want to re, you know, submit the application, or have any interest in submitting the application. You know, so that's, and that's also another area that may be trying to reach the people. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure, because I didn't hear you for a little while, but I'm not sure if you talk about the salary. I think the paperwork that directors of Calery have shown us is that it seemed like we are in line with other community sites. I looked at it, Cambridge, New Bedford, Quincy, Brockton. So those are some of the communities that, you know, in terms of populations, it's not too, it's not, the variation is not too much different from Lowell.
Could we hold off on that a little bit?
That's why, that's why, Mr. Chairman, so, yes, okay, thank you.
I'd just like to hold off on that till we, because I think the salary issue is important. But I'd just like to finish off the type of advertisement that we use, how far we'd go. Any other, Mayor Lee? Can't, yeah, can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I would like to skip the paper, I'm not sure how effective that is. If everybody's kind of, you know, so-so on that, then I'd say we just save the money on that end. Thank you.
Councilor Rock, Councilor Mercier, Councilor Drinkwater, Councilor Chow. Councilor Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't, do we have a total cost of all the outreach of advertisements, do we have a total yet?
The, the other ones, they're very reasonable, they're in the hundreds.
I just didn't know if the possibility of, you know, do we look for a firm to go find someone for us? You know, with the requirements, just an idea. I think the only, you know, the issue that this position has is the turnover. Was this the fourth one in the past, I don't know if it's less than a decade or not? So, you know, he's somebody with a, you know, a strong will, a strong personality, you know, obviously strong, you know, numbers-wise, so I just didn't know if we are, you know, just looking at a different way of doing something, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good point. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Relative to the posting, I profess no expertise here, but based on the cost, it does seem like a lot to advertise in the Globe. And my instinct would be that the, you know, the professional associations and their job boards, the mass municipal association would be, you know, the likely place for these postings to be viewed by an interested candidate. So I would support for now not moving forward with the advertisement in the Globe. Thank you.
Okay, welcome, Councilor Elliott, Councilor Mercier? Councilor Elliott, we're just now talking about the advertisement, and the question is whether we should advertise in the Boston Globe has come up as a good point. We can't hear you.
Thank you, I was in the waiting room for a little bit, but, yeah, I personally feel that any, as I mentioned, if there's any, you know, candidates looking to become the auditor of the city Lowell, perhaps they're not going to be looking at the Boston Globe. I think that has changed a little bit when it comes to job search and where candidates would go. So I think there are online organizations, MMA, GFOA, that anyone in this field looking to get a job will go to those locations, so. And the cost of, the cost is pretty significant in order to do so in the Globe. I think the last couple of times we did it, candidates that we interviewed, they went to the municipal or, you know, municipal accounting site. I would, I'd support not using the Globe this time.
All right, I would, from my own suggestion, I would, you know, have mixed reviews in the sense about the use of the Globe. As was stated, I think, by Councilor Conway a number of years ago, that was the gold ticket to advertisement, doesn't seem to be that today. The question is whether we'd go far, but it seems to be the general will of the council not to go that direction. Anybody else that be concerned, anybody if we do not advertise in the Boston Globe? Mary, so do you feel that what we, you'll have enough to be able to get a reasonable number of applicants?
Yes, I believe so.
Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, just, just, just very quickly, I think if we advertise and we find that the numbers are not there, the applicants are not there, I think what we ought to do is, is go back and visit Councilor Rock's idea of perhaps bringing in somebody on board, an organization or something or whatever, and it might be, it might be a good way to go, so they can vet these, they can vet it out, you know, with their expertise. Just a thought, see how it pans out, you know, with, with the original. And then after that, if that, if something happens and we're not, we're not getting what we want, I think we have to, we have to go in a completely different direction, just a thought.
No, I think it's a good thought, I think Councilor Rock is, myself, is correct. Perhaps we need an outside source, but at this point, we can, if we advertise now, and we should be very, I mean, because this is a good time of the year to advertise these jobs. If you recall, going into the Christmas season was oddly a time to do the advertising that we had to, it was necessary. But if we can get a reasonable number of qualified candidates, we're okay. But the thing is, Mary, could you prepare us, be able to give us a cost of what it would be in the event that we do not get the number of candidates that the city council would like to see to address Councilor Rock's request for inquiry at this point?
Yes, I will.
Councilor Rock? Are you satisfied with something like this?
Again, looking at all avenues, right? So it's just a suggestion, and maybe if we get it by next Tuesday's council meeting, we can talk about it then.
Okay, well, Mary, could you, could you provide that information to us for the next meeting?
Who the outside source will be?
Yeah, it could be, where we could, how much it would cost, so.
Sure, Councilor Rock, do you have any suggestions?
No, no, just what it would cost, that's all, you know, the process, how it would cost.
Okay, just the amount.
Just the idea, that's all, yeah.
Okay.
Another quick question, do you know how long we have this right for?
Yes, 90 days.
Thank you.
Okay. I think the next issue is the salary. Mary, could you review the salary, and then give us an idea how we fit into like communities?
Sure, so the current auditor was at 111-310-16. And you have a copy of the grid in front of you. It's the ordinance grid, and she's on a tier two, DH02, and she's on step six. Now, that 111 does not include the stipend of the 4,500, just an FYI. The max step is a little over 114, so plus the 4,500, I mean, you're looking at 119. And I think it's pretty compatible to communities that I sent you. I just got an update from Cambridge, I didn't have time to send it out. Their salary is actually 167. Other than that, everybody is correct. Now, there is another DH01 tier to the ordinance, which is your department heads, for example, the assistant city manager and the city solicitor, which I don't think the city auditor would warrant to go to a DH01. But, I mean, obviously, that's not my decision.
Okay, all right, Councilor Noon, you got a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure, Mary, are we looking not just for people to apply, but also, do we also invite, you know, past candidate to reapply if they wish, or no?
Yes, they can, yes.
Oh, so that, did you send anything to them and know of, so that they know, Mary?
No, we haven't done anything yet, I'm just waiting, after tonight, I can move forward to get a job posted and everything.
And could you remind me again, how long will the posting be?
Well, it's, will be up to the city council, but I would recommend at least 30 days.
30 days? So it would be like four weeks or three, a little over four weeks, right?
Yeah.
A little over three weeks, if you don't count the weekend.
Right, right, rather than go two weeks, then we got to push it out to three weeks. I figured four weeks, 30 days is ample amount of time to get a good amount of applicants in.
I see, I see, well, thank you, Mary, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Just a, just a clarification of a couple of things through you to Mary. Did you just say that you had an update from Cambridge, that it's 167,000, is that correct?
That's the salary, yes.
Because I'm looking at this here, and how did they, how did they go, or why would they go from 110,000 up to 167,000?
Yeah, I'm not really sure. They called in, and I can go back and see why. I thought that was kind of hard, but that's the salary they came back with.
Well, I mean, I was just curious on, you know, what do they know that we don't know? All of a sudden, it's 167,000, and they, and prior to that, it's 110. The other question I have, which I'm a little confused with, is where it says here, the $4,500 stipend that's separate from the salary. If I'm looking at jobs, you know, when I take a look at that money of 100, I think we're at 100, is that correct?
Yeah, that's the minimum step.
Right, the minimum, right. But why wouldn't you roll over the 100, the 45, 4,500 in with the 100,000?
I can do that, if that's the wish of the city council.
Well, because, you know what, Mary, it goes from 100, it starts off, then 104.5 up to 119, almost 120,000, which looks like we haven't changed the, we haven't changed the salary, but it looks a little bit more inviting on that up, on that upper end.
Yes, we can do that. The other thing we sometimes do is we just put salary negotiable, and we don't really advertise with any salary in there.
Well.
I can include that 4,500 into that max salary, if that's what you wish.
Well, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be negotiable in any way, if you've got a range?
If you put the range in there, yes, yes.
Well, that, I mean, what I'm looking at here is 100 to 114. If I'm applying for the job, I'm assuming that I'm going to put my best foot forward to try to get closer to that 114. Or is there, is there a reason why it's 114? For example, you know, when we say CPA preferred, does that mean if I have a CPA, I'm probably looking more at the 114,000?
Right, so just to have a better understanding. So the ordinance has salary grid. And the first step for the city auditor, which was not voted upon last year by the city council, was $97,000. The max was the 114, and that just changed as of 7/1/20. So with that being said, you wanted to put at the 100 to the 114. So whichever is in the budget, we could probably advertise and roll the 4,500 into it. That's, can be easily done.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see the 4,500 in that, the salary, the salary numbers to start with.
Okay, you want us to continue to start it at the 100, and then to the 120?
Well, I, I think you go on both ends. I think you go with 104, 104.5 up to 100 and whatever 45 is to 119-837. Keep it consistent in what we're doing.
Okay.
Any other comments from any? Anybody else? Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whatever we've been doing in the past, we continue to lose candidates to other jobs that are paying more, that are paying more. And I personally think that this person should be moved up into tier one, presumably at the lower end, and have an incentive to move up. Because when they hit the top tier, first of all, this person is one of the most significant employees in the city that's providing a check and a balance on a $364 million budget. So I appreciate the information that we did receive, but if you just go and do a quick search right now on GFOA, as I did, there were candidate with much, much smaller communities. Just say the town of Rainham, it's a tiny community, and they're paying their town accountant, again, just town accountant, $105,000. You go to, you know, again, a small community in North Hampton, the range is 100,000 to, 99 to 130. So this is why I think we're not attracting candidates where we're asking someone to come in. By the way, we have a CFO, as well as a school business administrator. Their salary ranges are significantly higher because of the level of responsibility. So my point is, the reason why we continue to get candidates that end up leaving after a year or two, I feel is for that reason. I want to keep ourselves competitive, we have to be reasonable as well. I'm not looking to inflate a salary any more than we have to, but I think we have to look at the comparison. And to some degree, if there is a correlation between, you know, the number, the population versus the budget, naturally, it's this symbiotic relationship, that you have more people, the budget is higher, the responsibility. It becomes very technical is my point, so. I personally think that we need to just move it up to that top tier. It is a department head, they need to be able to hire and manage their offices accordingly. I think that's part of this revamp. I think that's part of this revamping process that we have to, um, that we have to take a look at, because it, it's not just the salary, um, it's the responsibility and the requirement. So, um, you know, that's, that's just kind of my thought on retaining an auditor over a long, a long period of time. Um, and I, and I think those are, you know, it's not just one item, in, in my opinion. Um, you know, the forty-five hundred, sure, let's, let's include that, but I think every auditor knows that they're gonna be part of the retirement board. But I, I think it's important to note that that was actually one item, I think, in the past that we had to bring to the attention of some of the candidates that weren't familiar with municipal government, so.
And just to, um, if you finish, Council Elliot, the, the reason why the salary is separate on the posting is because that's actually paid by the retirement, the forty-five hundred stipend.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm probably aware of that. I, I.
Yes, uh, yeah.
Uh, the, the issue with salary, uh, Council Elliot brought up, uh, you know, some sound, uh, tactics here. I- i- in a sense, if you look at it, the last two auditors that we've had, even though they were CPAs, had no, really very little, if any, municipal experience. Uh, and so in a sense, they had to, in a sense, train on the job as to dealing with, uh, city, city issue. Uh, when I looked at the salary that was, uh, set aside for, uh, Cambridge, that was basically way out of whack to what Cambridge pays. Cambridge, uh, pays much higher salaries in all categories. So basically, I, I think that was either a mistake that was sent to Mary or, you know, something from books of a, a long time ago. I mean, the hundred and sixty-seven thousand, basically, uh, I think, uh, is true to what Cambridge would be paying. I'm not saying that we can do anything like that, but the, the issue of putting the person in another category so there's, uh, more of a chance. I, I, I think we have to do something salary wise, because we have not, uh, got, we've got, you know, some nice people. The last auditor, um, she was, uh, well-trained. I mean, she came in with the necessary skills, but she still had to do a lot to learn how a city functions and ca- catch up on, uh, those type of issues. And she did a credible job. But I think at this point, the city auditor is one of the most important positions to the city council, because that, it, like the city clerk, this position reports to the city council. We wanna be sure that the information we get is clean and clear. So my opinion is that we should raise it, uh, raise the salary. And, and to what category, I'm, I'd like to get input from this group as to what we'd recommend to the full city council. If, if anything, Council Conway or Council Noon, or then, Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think salary is one of the factors, though. I mean, it's clearly, it's a high factors in determining and trying to recruit a good candidate, a good auditor. Uh, we also have to look at, uh, look for someone who are looking for advancement in their career and someone local. And, and, I mean, the, the previous auditor that we have, um, you know, um, she, she not even live in Low. She live in Worcester. So it's hard for her to come. She love to work here. She come down here. I mean, it's a long drive, long drive for her, for her families. So, I mean, look, if you're looking, looking for someone who are also, uh, uh, looking for advanced, to advance their career, maybe assistant auditors from, you know, who have some understanding of the municipal, uh, you know, uh, uh, auditors, um, and, or who, who live not too far away from Low, or better yet, who live in Low. I mean, then, 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 you know, we get, you know, the work for a buck, as well as, you know, I mean, the range that we giving. I think I, I do agree, but it's, we need to have a range. If we need to, if we were to increase the salary, you know, looking to add, when, increase the salary a little bit, that's fine, but with a range. Like Council Conway said, you know, that way when people come in and they don't have a whole lot of municipal, uh, uh, skill, uh, you know, we can't just max them out. Uh, uh, so we have, we give ourselves room, the flexibility as to, you know, if someone come in with, you know, a good experience and, and, or, you know, I mean, I know we not, we not required this time. There's good thing that we didn't, uh, uh, the, uh, PCA, um, you know, and, 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 and so, so if someone who have the experience and that, you know, uh, uh, qualification and, and, and so, you know, I wouldn't mind max that person up. But, you know, whatever we do, we need to have that range, but allow ourselves the flexibility. Thank you.
Council Conway?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that, it's, I, I assume that it is an issue, uh, the salary. I mean, if we look at that shot, uh, I think we're, uh, we're competitive, but on the, on the lower end, to be quite frank with you. I know that might be sound a little contradictory, but I, I, I would, uh, I, I wouldn't, um, be against, uh, raising, uh, the salary so that we can be more competitive, uh, and get somebody that, uh, um, you know, decides that they wanna put their roots here and stay here for a while, uh, because we don't wanna, we don't wanna go, be going through what we went through, uh, in the last few years. Excuse me. Um, so, yeah, I, I would not be, uh, I would not be against raising the salary a, a bit on that.
Uh, Mary, uh, could you, uh, what's your suggestion? Do you have a suggestion as to what, uh, I'm sorry, Council Mercia? Can't hear you, Councilor. You're mute, you're still muted? Council Mercia?
Hit the wrong one. Gotta hit the other one, Rita. No, I can't hear you, Rita. You got the wrong button, Rita. Keep in your audio or video.
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting, could, uh, could Mr. Calery provide us with, uh, what the range is? Um, if this was moved, position was moved from a, uh, tier one, excuse me, from a tier two to a, to a tier one where department, all department heads are, which I'm a little surprised to learn that this position is in a tier two. I, I believe, um, the clerk who works for us is at here in, in tier one, right, Mr. Clerk?
I am.
So is this the only department that doesn't, um, fall into tier one, Miss Calery?
Uh, no.
What are some examples of some, of, of department? Cause there are some very, I, I understand that department heads, but, but they're very, you know, they're, they're small departments. But can you give me any info?
One off the top of my head is the assessor.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I have the salaries here, if you want them, of the tier one.
Yeah, could you please?
Yes.
The first one is one fourteen, six, forty-eight, oh, four, and the max step, one thirty-four, seven hundred and eighty.
Okay, thank you.
So that would be the next category, Mary, that we put somebody in, correct?
Yes. And I'm not sure, um, I think Connor is on, um, about their, um, the auditor's budget. That's, that's the tier one range. Don't you want me to go through all the steps? So there's seven steps.
No, I don't want the steps. I just, I just think that, A, this position should be up there, um, there in, in that particular bracket. And if someone tried at the lower end, that would be the high end of tier two, so I.
Yeah.
All right. Could I have a motion from the subcommittee to bring this to the full, uh, committee for a vote? Council Conway?
Yes.
Wanna make that motion?
Yes, I will.
Okay, Council Noon?
I can it.
Fine. So we, we will, uh, make this request for an official vote on Tuesday's, uh, city council meeting, correct? All right. Are there any other, are there any other questions regarding any, any other needs? Uh, what we discussed tonight was the basic job description, which everybody accepted, the job qualifications. Council, uh, you came in later, but you had brought up the issue of whether it should be a CPA or not. And as done in the past to hirings, CPA preferring. You know, all right, so that allows, uh, candidates with different type of experience to come in. Uh, we also, uh, reviewed, uh, the hiring process, what we used. And it was stated that, uh, if we're not successful, uh, with this, uh, group, it was taught, it was thought out to go to the Boston Globe, but Council Rock brought up the, uh, issue is that if we're not successful with this thirty-day hiring process, that we consider, uh, going, basically going to a headhunter. Any disagreement with what I've stated? Council Conway, Council Noon, uh, the councilors? And so, and the suggestion, suggesting regarding salary to go to, uh, what, level one, Mary?
Yes, yeah.
Council Conway, are you in, uh, is that, does that cover what we have tonight?
I think so.
Council Noon?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Council Elliot?
No, that's, that's fine with me. That's a good process. Um, no, I, I think that makes all the sense. I think we're gonna, I think given where, sort of, adjusting the, the requirements. Um, because if you, if you do look at a quick read through, um, whether it's finance directors, uh, town accountants, uh, auditors, controllers, um, you know, the, the requirements, not looking for CPA, cause that's a completely separate field, so. I wanna put in preferred, but that's okay, but at least we will not prevent some other candidates. It's a completely different type of accounting, so. I would just, um, through you, Mr. Chairman, I would just to see if, um, Mr. Baldwin, if, if, um, if we could ask him if he sees any other, only given the fact that he is the, the budget director, um, the treasurer, those particular functions. Any, any other, um, thoughts, if, if I can, through you, Mr. Chair, to Connor on?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you asking what avenues would be best for listed candidates?
I mean, when you go to hire the treasurer, for instance, or the, uh, the deputy CFO, um, you know, posting descriptions, I mean.
I, I think the, the avenues that Miss Calery has, has laid out, the MGFOA, the, uh, the MMA, um, those organizations will be your best bet for finding, uh, talented candidates. I think at the same time, uh, myself and, and my colleagues here in, in the finance department will, will be actively, um, recruiting from, um, you know, our, our colleagues in, in government, uh, for folks to try to come here to Lowell, because it's such a special place to work.
Right.
Thank you. Council? Mr. Mayor, did you have a question, Mr. Mayor?
To have the stat, the salary voted on by the full council?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, uh, but, uh, is the, the mayor, I believe, had his, uh, wanted to say something? Mr. Clerk, are you, are you with the mayor?
Yeah, he's all set. He's all set.
Okay, Council, drink water? Are you all set?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Council Mercia, did, have you gotten a chance to get on board? You had a question? Can we get through to Council, uh, Mercia? Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, she's still on mute, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
She's having trouble coming off of mute.
So the, the question is, uh, when we resolve that Tuesday, uh, the expectation would be that the, the, uh, job would be posted that the next day, correct?
Yes, so I, I won't be doing anything until the next city council meeting next Tuesday. And the only other thing, um, it'll be up for thirty days.
Is everybody, uh, that's our recommenda- we might as well make that the recommendation to the full board.
Okay.
Uh, do we need a vote on that to recommend that, uh, Council Noon or Council Conway to make that a motion? That we post the job for thirty days?
Up to you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Oh, fine. Seconded by Miss Conway. Is that, is that okay, Miss Conway?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, to recommend thirty-day appointment to the entire city council. Okay, I, I think we're all set. Right, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, thank you, Mary. Everybody.